So, welcome to the April AMSA Board of Trustees Meeting. And officially called the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Announced this meeting is livestreamed on Facebook. The agenda says YouTube, but it is Facebook now. And next up, we need Sarah, could you please announce the board members in attendance?
Alright, let me just do a quick check here. Alright, we have Bella Gorman, Ben Hamel, Don Capello, Jill Schaefer, Kristen Carney, Liz Saul, Mara Webster, Nick Poirier, Roger Jarrett, Somini Sempath, and Zachary Oglesby.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up, I'm seeking volunteers for a timekeeper to keep us on track this evening.
Happy to do it.
Alright, Zach, keep us on track there. Thank you. At the end of this meeting, we will be moving into executive session to discuss negotiation with the nonrepresented personnel, their executive director. We will not reconvene into a public session. So, that is that. We've recorded our attendance. Liz, is there anyone requesting public comment that's contacted you?
I just checked, there were no emails for public comment. I'm not sure if anyone's on the line that wanted to make a public comment, but there were no email requests.
Anyone wishing to address the board in public comments section? Hearing none, we will move on to our vote section of the meeting. We have one vote tonight to approve the minutes from the March meeting. Looking for a motion to approve the March minutes?
I make a motion to approve them.
Okay, I'll second Liz.
So that was Liz and what were the two? I'm sorry, it's hard to...
Liz and Somini.
Okay.
Roll call votes, please.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel? Ben Hamel? Ben?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, alright, yeah. Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristen Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul?
Yes.
Mara Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier? Nick?
I abstain, I just sat down, so I have no idea.
Oh, great, great. Somini Sempath?
Yes.
Zachary Oglesby?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
I think you missed me, Sarah.
Oh, did I? Oh, yes, I did.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Thanks. So, we have nothing, no other votes from the consent agenda, so we are now on to our executive director report. Ellen, you have the floor. Everyone else, please mute unless you need to comment.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much. Welcome everyone out tonight, as I get my screen set up. Alrighty, well, here we are, April 28th, 2022. Each time I put my board report together, I go back to the prior year, same month, and I go back to prior year. Now I can go back like three years, which is fun to have all that history. But when I was looking at April, it was all just so weird the last couple of years, and had to go back to like April of 2019, I guess, to really look at what we talked about. One year of COVID, and then actually April 28th of 2021 was the first day we returned back to school last spring. So today was a memorable day a year ago. We are going to take just a quick look at the MCAS schedule. Sarah's been very, very busy. You can see she's still at school today because she's preparing for a second round of MCAS tomorrow. And we also have the APs that are coming out beginning on Monday for the next two weeks. A little razzle-dazzle time, gonna start that out early. Raul's not even here for that. Just some expressions of gratitude for everything that everyone is doing and getting through the school year here with such really honestly positive attitudes and hard work. And then talk about a few upcoming events, because we've got all the senior events and things coming up. And then we're going to have a building update, and we're going to have a little discussion time. So just, you can see here really quickly, you know, MCAS, MCAS, MCAS and AP, oh my. You can see everything in blue. Sarah has already administered and has gone very, very well. And then today they had, you can see in the green, MCAS math, grade six, seven, and eight. And you can imagine about 140 students in each one of those classes, and what an undertaking it is to manage all of that and to train everyone and to get it all packed up and ready. It's on the computer now, but it's a huge, it's a huge job, and our IT department is also very involved. So they completed session one today. They have session two tomorrow. And then we go into the eighth grade, have their science MCAS right around Labor Day, sorry, Memorial Day, and then biology is always the first week there in June. So that's what we have coming up, and it's been quite a ride. Sarah has been a real champion. And then we have the school counseling department, who will be administering all the AP exams. Just thought you might be interested. You know, different than last year, right? Last year, there was options of was it going to be computer-based or paper-based, and where they were going to be done at home and all of that. We're back to the old system again this year. It's all exams will be paper-based, as they've been in the past. Interesting, I thought that College Board might swing to all online testing, but they're not. And that all of our testing will be administered at Four Kicks this year. And we have tried many different options, and Best Westerns, and local churches, and all types of places. But we're going to give Four Kicks a full shot this year, and I'm looking forward to that going very, very well. And as you can see, when all of these exams are happening over the next couple of weeks. So we wish all our students a lot of luck and sleep and eating nutritiously, ready for their AP exams. Little bit of razzle-dazzle before we get into some bigger topics. Wanted to just let you know, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we've actually held two February and an April Break Acceleration Academy. These were covered by grants. Grants that were applied for by Jana Jobell, who's been a grant writer for the last couple of years, and Luba, and Kate Driver, actually. Kate's our grant queen. And so we brought the students in over February vacation. These pictures are from April vacation. They're just amazing. It's all hands-on math that these students are doing. They opt in. I believe over February vacation, we had over 70 students that came in, mostly middle school. And they're working just to strengthen skills and to, you know, learn in a little bit maybe of a different way, in a smaller, smaller setting. Teachers are paid stipends, and we have folks that organize this to make sure that all the supervision and all is covered. But they had, I've heard, a great experience. You see all those smiling faces, aren't they wonderful? And then, we're also very proud to announce that, once again, AMSA is the number-two public high school in Massachusetts out of 340 high schools. We're very excited about this. Nationally, number 153 out of 17,843 public high schools, 39 out of 2,830 charter high schools in the country. And, you know, I always like to mention too, that, you know, we want people to know that although we get excited about these types of, you know, rankings, because they're based on data that represent our kids and our school, and we, and, you know, it just feels good to be represented like this. But we know that our kids are so much more than numbers, right? And our staff is more than numbers. The numbers are awesome, because we love data. But we know that people and education is what's important. But we sure do love seeing this, and I know that you celebrate with me. We've been in the top four in Massachusetts, kind of moving around there a little bit over the last, gee, since I've been at AMSA seven years now. But we're very happy to be in that number-two spot again, so, so happy about that. One of the little pieces of information they give you, if you go on to the website, I know you received an email about this, but if you click on there, it gives you a scorecard. So you kind of have an idea of some of the things that they're looking at, although there's more as well. But, you know, we, obviously, we ranked very, very high in our graduation rate and our science reading math proficiency, and also they're using the AP exams on how many students, percentage of students taking at least one exam and passing the exam. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things that goes into it. If you look a little bit more deeply on the website, you'll see they talk about college readiness. And I do think that's really one of the very important parts, percentage of kids going off to college, and they look at all that data as well. So it's interesting if you're interested in looking at that a little bit further. So we're celebrating here with just a little bit of fireworks. It just feels really good after all that the school and the country has been through, that AMSA is still recognized as a top-notch, highly academic school that prepares kids for life after AMSA and life after college, or wherever they choose to go. And so we're really happy about that. But once again, we know that our success really is a collective effort, right? It's all of us, including our board, including our administrators, our staff, our teachers, our students, our family. It's everyone's work together that makes AMSA successful. We're not perfect by any stretch. We continue to work every day. But, you know, the way that the school has come together, especially in the last five years, I really believe that it's something that we can all be very, very proud of. And I, once again, want to thank all of those stakeholders for their hard work and their commitment and their teamwork of every single person that's part of our community. And in what the students do every day, I was at the NHS induction, National Honor Society induction last night, and I have been honored to be asked to be the closing speaker for the last, I think, four years. And I just, it's my favorite, my favorite event at AMSA. If you ever get an opportunity to go, I highly recommend it. And one of the greatest parts about it is that all us seniors get up one at a time, and they talk about a teacher in our community who has made a difference in their lives. And it was really, it was just a beautiful, a beautiful event. And all those teachers that are being honored are there as well, and families, and grandparents, and things. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for kids to really reflect about who's made a difference. And I was surprised to see and hear how many of the children, how many of the students recognized a teacher they had during remote learning. And it made me think about the difference that our educators made even through a little screen, right? At times, they had a teacher that was a two-by-two square, and yet that teacher made a difference in their lives. And it's just, it's really an honor to work with the adults I get a chance to work with every day and see such joy with these kids last night. Absolutely an honor. So some upcoming events, we actually have, AMSA has Aladdin Junior at Tejant County Regional High School this weekend, Friday, and two shows on Saturday, if you're interested in attending there. You can get tickets on the school store. As I mentioned, we had NHS last night, and then we have the Senior Awards Night, and you'll be getting invitations for that on the 24th, and that's at the Best Western, I believe. We have Arts and Science Night. This is the first time, for those of you who've been around a while, this is the first time we're combining these. This is a little experiment from Christie Jagalski and Sarah Preston. They're staggered a bit, but they're going to be using all three buildings. And we will be having, Mark Vital is working with different companies to invite them that night to experience our science research program. So we would love to have as many of you come out for that as well. Junior/Senior Prom is May 27th, Friday, that's a half a day at school. And then we have the seniors' last day of school is May 31st. It's really hard to believe, but right around the corner. And then we'll be having graduation outdoors. It's a Friday evening, June 10th. You are all, once again, invited to attend that, and you'll be receiving more information about that as well. And want to make sure that August 15th is on everyone's calendar, and that if you golf or you don't golf, that you come on down to the golf course and participate in our golf tournament. This is the third year that we've had the golf tournament. Keep in mind that you can just come for dinner. They do a dinner, and they have a raffle, and they have silent auction, and Nick always attends, and so does Ben, and Ben is someone to beat in golf. So just keep that in mind if you come out and play golf with us. You may want to be on his team. Okay, so, and so here, we're going to talk a little bit about the building and give you an update on what's been happening with the design work. And to, I do have an ask for you, and it's actually on the next slide. So just to give you a little bit of a brief history on what has happened with the design work, because obviously, things are not moving along as we had hoped that they would at this point. When we went into this project and what we tasked the team to do, which is the architects and the construction management team and all of that, and Bob and Cassania, the OPMs, was to look at building out the 165 building. You know, initially, it was like the third and fourth floor, how many classrooms can we get in there? Can we put offices in there? And we went through all of that. We talked about the gym facility, wanting a gymnasium on campus, and where was that going to go? Adding classrooms, parking, full landscape, and closing the campus, you know, changing the in-and-out route on, in and out of campus. And then we knew that that was going to be a huge project. And so we were trying to also phase out that project and say, okay, how much can we do in this phase? And how much can we do in that phase? We spent a lot of time trying to work through that and breaking down the different components of the project to see if we could figure out a way that we could make it work, that we could afford it. And that entire project altogether is, came in at $22 million, approximately. And obviously, that's too much. And even though we tried to break it down, it just, it wasn't working. And part of the issue was the 165 building and the coating, which we've known and always known was going to be a problem. The cost to do that is astronomical and has, at this point, because of the building and the way that things are right now, really doesn't make it practical to build out the 165 building, unfortunately. So then we started to look at, the team went back to the drawing board and started to look at, excuse me, combining the gymnasium with the five science labs. We looked at putting, you know, the box of the gymnasium with labs underneath, the side, on top of, layered, and came up with some ideas, sent the team back to kind of look at the prices on that, and it was about $18 million. This always, these numbers always included going around, you know, the roadway going around the building. So that's essential, and these numbers have always included that. But this $18 million didn't include any of the work of landscaping being done between the buildings. This was just, the standalone gymnasium combined with science labs, five or six science labs, as part of the gymnasium building. It turned out that the least expensive way to go was to put those labs underneath, because it kept the same footprint on the gymnasium. But still, once again, it was approximately $18 million to be able to do that project. And as we know, we have about $12 million to work with. So what we've really determined is that during the Phase One, we can't have both an academic space and a gym space. We can't afford it, unfortunately. So we have three choices that we can see. And we met with the Facilities Task Force today, which is me and Leanna and Eric and Don and Nick. Met with Roger and Raul just prior to this meeting. We always have a monthly meeting during that time, and Don was there as well to review this information. We believe we have three choices. The first choice being that we focus on an academic standalone building. Now, this idea came at a time of desperation, when it began to feel like we were talking about this huge gymnasium, and academics was being quote-unquote "added on." And it started to feel really uncomfortable for me, because we're a school, and we're a school of academics, and we're the number-two public school in the state, and the fact that we're even in this situation is beyond me. But we are. So I said, you know, okay, we can't, this is starting to be ridiculous. We want a gymnasium, we stand by our academics, we stand by our sports program, but we are a school. And so what can you give us? What can you, what can you make for us that would cost about $10 to $12 million? Can we have a standalone academic building? So the team went back, and they've created just, you know, some drawings and some just estimates based on that request. We don't have anything exact by any shot at all, because I need your support and your help before we move forward. Or, we can do, we can focus on a standalone gymnasium, and that's what it's going to be. It's going to be a gymnasium. It's not going to have lockers, it's not going to have any academic spaces or offices. It would be just the standalone gymnasium. Or, we can add more money to the project. Now, I put that in parentheses because I believe there may be some in the reserve, but I don't know if this is a practical move for us or if it's the right move for us. So what I am recommending, and we are looking for your agreement or disagreement, because we need to give a direction to the design team in order to help them move forward. And so what I am asking for tonight is to let me know what you support. Is the support of the board to create a standalone academic building? Or is it to create a standalone gymnasium? We can create an academic building that would then stand about where the gymnasium was going to be, but have the slab already down and ready and prepared for down the line. I would like to tell you that my recommendation to the board is to focus on the standalone academics building, because I think that's who AMSA is, and I think that our kids and our families deserve that. But I would like to open it up to all of you for any kind of discussion you may have. And I'm going to start sharing so I can see you and answer any questions. Nick is able to answer any technical construction questions you have, and Don is up to date as well.
I have a question. So if we move forward with the standalone academic building, you just mentioned that we could still have something set up for a gymnasium later on. So we have space for a standalone academic building, and then an add-on to, for a gymnasium?
So the, yes, so what they're looking at right now, so originally, let's pretend you're driving up to the school and you're by the nurse's office. So the gymnasium was going to go a long, long way into that area. And what they're looking at now is that the academic building would be smaller than that. It would be pushed forward a little bit, and then they would create the, the gymnasium would actually be turned 90 degrees, so it would end up being more like a T. So the gymnasium eventually would be here, and the academic building would be here, but they can tuck both of them in into that same, that same space.
And how much space would that academic building be? Do we know, or?
Yeah, it's about, I believe it's about 20,000 square feet.
And so you're thinking that would be more classrooms, more labs? So what is that? Is that all the labs and classrooms, or just the labs?
No, this would be what we're looking at right now, and Bella, once again, you know the numbers.
I know, I know.
Have to get, I don't, you know, we don't want to get...
Just an idea, I guess, just I'm like, what are you thinking?
So what we're thinking is it would be two floors of classes, actually. We would still make the five labs a priority, because I think that's very important for the programs that goes forward. And we could potentially do somewhere between another five and 10 classrooms as well. And those classrooms would be approximately the size of the white building, the 165. They're about 750 square feet, and the labs would be somewhere still in the 1,000 to 1,100 range.
And we would still use the white building, like that first floor, like we're doing now?
That's, that is correct. There's 10 classrooms there.
Ellen, do you think it would be helpful if I just, if I shared quickly, just kind of in overall, just to give everyone a quick, just a quick look?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the sketches?
Yeah, yeah. If that's something that you want to do. I mean, I have them up, so I could show it.
So we're in a public meeting, and that just concerns me, because they really were literally sketches that Tony put together for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I'd rather have something a little more official.
Sure.
Ellen, this has been, on the two first options, is there finances analysis against them as well? So if we went to the academic building only or the gym only, was there a cost for those thought through yet?
A cost for what part? The designs?
How much would the, because you, on the previous slide, you talked about how everything would be $22 million if we want to do everything we wanted, $18 million if we dropped it down a little bit. I'm paraphrasing, right? And then you said, or we have these other options. And the option would be an academic-only building. What is the cost of the academic-only building or the gym-only building?
We do not have an exact number. I have a very rough estimate on the academic building. And between the academic building and changing the traffic pattern for safety is going to be in the 14 million range.
So still above our $12 million allocation, right?
Because, well, because, Ben, we have not gone through any of the value engineering. We haven't gone through any of the process of looking and paring down. That was just a number that, an initial number that we received. There's a lot of process, but I didn't want them to put any more time or money into it until all of you were behind it and said, yeah, this is the direction we're going in. So, you know, after our meeting on Tuesday, I said, just, you know, let's everybody take a big, deep breath, and I got a meeting on Thursday, and we'll figure out next steps.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to know that number, because basically, what I see is if you did the gym and the pieces together, it was 18 or 22 million, right? When you break them apart, it's going to be more doing them separately than it is to do them all at once. We know that.
Now, remember that it's cost prohibitive to do the 165 building. Believe it or not, we can create a new building that costs less than fitting out the 165 building.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm saying is we need academic space and we need gym space. If you do it all together, it's going to be cheaper. If you do it separately and do it two different projects, it'll end up being overall more expensive. So that's why I was asking you, like...
I don't know, that's true. I don't know what the economy is going to be down the line. And we're really up against a lot of challenges through just the construction industry right now. Nick can speak more to that, but we don't know that that's true. It could be.
Yeah, but I don't know how we can make really a decision on one or two without knowing any economics, right? And/or, you know, what the impact is of not doing another option. And then the third option you put in there was funding. If 12 million's our current budget, obviously, there's not enough money in our reserves to cover $10 million either. So that really isn't an option, or 6 million, right?
That's why I put it in parentheses, Ben.
Yeah, I understand.
Because I was saying, I didn't think it was an option, but, you know, you need to throw out all possibilities, right? I think what we're looking for at the moment is kind of a philosophy of the board around this. Do you want us to move forward and look at the academic side of things? We can't have both right now. I have, we have done backflips for seven months, and we cannot do both. I can't tell you the amount of hours that these folks have put into this. And so if we can't do both...
We have to provide, sorry, Ellen, we have to provide the design team with a direction on where to really start focusing, so that we're not running in circles anymore. And so that's the big thing, is are we going to focus more on... And so that's the big thing is are we gonna focus more on trying to make the gym work with the academics taking a backseat or do we wanna put the academics first and make the gym be the backseat, right? So I think that's, we've just gotta give them a direction because we're, not that we're, we're having them chase their tails, but we have them doing a lot of different things and we're starting to get a little closer. But I think we're getting to a crossroads now where we really have to, we have to give them direction on where their main focus needs to be. And we, as part of the Facilities Task Force, we wanted to bring it to the board. I mean, I think, and I'll speak for myself, I mean, being the number two school in the state, um, based on academics, I mean, I think it's a no brainer on where we wanna put the focus. But that doesn't mean that we're not still thinking about how we might be able to get the gym to fit in. But really it's gotta come down to academics or athletics. And so we've got it, we've gotta move forward more aggressively in one direction than the other because we can't run, we tried to run parallel paths and it's just not, right now it's just not working from a financial standpoint. It doesn't work.
Yeah.
I do wanna throw in there that we, because Kristen, I see her, she's gonna jump in, but Kristen, we're working on updating the models. Cause we understand that there's a cost to this with four kicks as well.
Yeah, and I was gonna mention that, but also, you know, we've had a, we've had a good year and I know in parentheses, you had that other, what other monies do we have available? And I, I do think before we make the final decision, Ben brings up some good points that financially, if we look at what that final cost is going to be in one way or the other, even at a high level, it would be worthwhile before making, you know, a recommendation for it. We can talk on that really quickly offline too, you know, as a finance committee. We don't have to.
No one's making any final decisions for sure, but what Nick, I just reiterate what Nick said. Uh, we need to either give them the green light and say, price this out, do the drawings because the technical type of drawings and work they do and the detail of every single cost, that takes time, it takes money, it, it takes, uh, you know, it's a whole other project and we either want them to look at that or we, we're stopping, you know, we're pausing everything, which is okay until something else happens. So that, that's kind of where we are.
I had one more question, Ellen, too, and maybe you did this, was, um, did you also, did we explore going to the bank and looking for additional funding?
We've already talked to the bank.
And they said, yeah.
The bank approved us for that amount of money based on our finances.
I, I know, but during your analysis now, have you gone back to the bank?
We told them that we were having problems getting the project to a place where it was affordable. Yes.
And then they said, no, there's no more room?
They, we did not ask them for more money and I would not ask them for more money without talking to finance and make sure that we knew that we could afford more money. No.
Okay, and I just, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
My biggest concern with them right now, Ben, honestly, is making sure that we have a project that it has enough equity in it to, to, to secure the law. Right? Because we have to get the new building, the new project assessed to make sure that they will continue to, to lend us 24 million dollars.
I think that's the key too, right? Is that, just like you said, they did the loan based on a certain amount valuation on the estimates of the buildings before. And so maybe the equity is higher because the value of the buildings are higher or, or not because obviously, uh, well, we're not, we're not redoing 165, right? We're adding an additional building. So that actually could increase the property value because we still have the entire equity from the white building, but now we're actually adding more building to the project.
You're right, Kristen, and Bob has mentioned that to us as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we told, we told Thatcher we'd get back in touch with them when we knew, had a better idea of what the project was gonna be. And as you can imagine, there is impact to the, to the capital campaign, right? Because we don't know what the project is right now to, um, to go out there and raise money and the materials that we have, I'll talk about the old project. So that's why things have slowed down there as, as well. This is a different project. Maura?
Yeah, so, and forgive me if this is, if I repeat anything that's already been said or asked. I wanna look at the big picture because I don't know that I'm comfortable saying we're gonna go this way or this way because of, yes, we're an academic institution and that is sort of our primary focus. It's in our name. But I'm at the beginning stages and I know a lot of folks here have already gone through the college process with their kids and I'm sort of just jumping in headfirst and seeing that yes, the academics are obviously paramount and important, but everything I have heard from the prestigious academic institutions that we all want our kids to go to doesn't focus on just academics. And in fact, places like VC and other places I've sat down at are like, yeah, no, that's great. But we look at like your academics in your level bubble and we look at like this school's academic in their level bubble, right? Everything is sort of based on where you're at. And so it's the other things that set their kids apart. And I'm not in any way slighting academics and saying it's not important and I wanna be very clear about that. But I also wanna say that I don't know that I'm comfortable picking one or the other unless we have an actual big plan, which means blowing up to more than a two-year capital campaign. It means looking at, okay, you know what? This is actually a six-year campaign and these are the phases we're gonna work it in, right? Like, I think it's more than just saying build this, like design this and design that. It really is, it doesn't have to be an or, but it needs to be an and with a detailed timeline for not only the construction and the design, but actually the fundraising. And I think the more we talk about it and the more, the more detailed we get, the better chance we're gonna have at fundraising for any project, right? Because people are gonna understand we're not coming just once and, oh, hey, you know what? You can make a pledge. It's gonna, you're gonna pay for it over seven years, right? So I think it, that will, that's, I just wanna get that out there because I don't want us to lose sight of and start thinking in an, uh, if, uh, or either or mentality when the project that will really benefit AMSA long-term and our students and where they go in life is really an and project.
Well, this is, this is definitely a phased project and, and you know, we've been talking about it in that way, um, for sure. We do have a world-class facility right next door and I know that there's quite a bit of cost to that, but we will never have a gymnasium like the Four Kicks facility. Um, in conversations I've had with Pete, he's extremely concerned actually about the height of the gym ceiling that we've been talking about. It doesn't work for volleyball and we have very competitive girls in particular volleyball program. So he's actually really kinda worried about what we're gonna be able to afford and how it really is gonna work. And so in, based on the conversation I had with Pete this week, it, it sounds to me as though the competitive place for our kids to play sports is Four Kicks.
Ellen, can I jump in on?
Information that I think all of our families need to know as well, right? Like, we don't wanna build a gym that isn't going to really benefit our competitive program, right? So that, that's good information.
Just to, just to jump in, um, cause those are really, those are some of the points that I've been thinking about a lot more is sort of, we've got the reality of, we don't have enough to do it all at once. And Ellen has been great about telling us it'll probably be a phased project. Um, and now we're at the point where we really know we don't have enough to do it all at once. So it's a phased project. You know, tonight's direction to let them know to focus on an academic building first versus the gym first is exactly your point, I think, Maura, one of your points. And that's, we need to, once we decide tonight, because if we don't decide tonight, we'll just have the same conversation next month. Like the design team just needs to know at this point, what's our number one? Um, and I think this group can give that direction and then we'll have some more detailed drawings, detailed costs to look at next time to make the next set of decisions in front of us. In between, we'll meet in finance, of course. But I think what's really important and Nick did a really good job at the building meeting today of making sure we build it in a, not scalable, but a way we can phase it easily, like, you know, cause they presented options where we, we would never build a gym, right? Do you wanna try this? This, we probably could do cheaper, but you'll never have a gym on this site. But they get us and Bob does a good job advocating for us. It's gonna be done in a way that we can build on, even if we don't do both sets of classrooms the first year and we do one set and then add it on. Nick knew all of what you do to make sure the HVAC and the electrical and, I mean, I won't go on, so I have no idea. But all that stuff, I love that approach and I, and just to finally, I'm sorry, I'm rambling. We have to have a really big discussion somewhere. I said this to Roger earlier about what development is gonna have to do because we can't put all of this on Ellen for any reason. That's just one person, right? So I think that, and I've never been on the development committee. I don't know what the mission is. I don't know what the goals are. If it's, you know, make 10 corporate connections a year. I don't know if there are actual numbers tied to it. Other than the golf, I, I don't need to know any of that now, but I'm happy to try to like flesh out what we're gonna need. And so my long-winded answer is you're right, Maura. It is gonna be a phased project and we have to look at the fundraising and we might not know the right answer. You know, someone, if someone said to me, when will the gym come? Cause I think we'll pick the academic option. It's just a crazy thought. It's gonna be, it's gonna be here as soon as we fundraise, right? And that has to, I think this board is gonna have to be a bigger part of that. So I'll jump off my soapbox, but we can do it. It's just gonna be a lot of work.
Other questions? I know the number, the board members haven't had a chance to respond yet. So people who have not asked questions, if you have any questions?
Um, so I have a question. Say we.
Bella, you've already, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You've already asked questions. I'm gonna try to, I'll get, you're on, you're on my, that's on my list, but I'd really like to open it up for people who have not asked a question yet.
I was just gonna say that I, I, the way I view this is it's a prioritization at this point. It's not, you know, we're doing one or the other. It's just which one are we doing first and which one are we doing second and how can we? And, and Nick, I think you just, um, sort of laid it out. How can we do the first thing in such a way that it'll make it easier and, you know, more efficient to do the second thing?
Yeah, and to not get into it, what we talked about today was, again, what are the top priorities? What is the, what is the, the biggest need that the school has? And coming up with a master plan that eventually gets us the gym, that eventually gets us new offices, that eventually gets us all the classrooms that we need. But right now, the biggest piece is, do we, do we do the, the major infrastructure so that we can add on at a much smaller cost later on and absorb that bigger cost now? Get the school, um, the priorities that we need right this second with some of the other ones lingering behind for later dates that we can do the capital campaigns, but at least have that master plan so that we're not reworking anything and we're not spending money more, like double time to do something because we didn't think through it. So that's what's so important now is to really prioritize what the focus is going to be, but with the understanding of having this master plan and trying to figure the different options so that when we do really present it to the board, that we've got all these different options and we've got a phased approach to getting the school exactly what it needs over a certain period of time, knowing that we cannot afford everything at once.
Yeah, I'd also just like, thank you, Nick. Thank you, thank you a million times. That this is all new information for us, right? The first time I saw these sketches was like Monday and we had a meeting with the team on Tuesday and they were like, where do you want us to go? As I said before. And so this is, this is all new information. So we don't have a lot of the numbers to go with it. We don't have a timeline to go with it yet. Um, but in order to keep making steps forward, we're, we're asking you for Liz, priority. I like the word.
Bella, did you? Did you?
Yeah, I, I guess I have, you know, it's, I totally understand where, you know, the predicament we're in. And so if, in terms of prioritization, if we go back and say, let's focus on the academic building, how long is it gonna take everyone to pull together a plan and a quote, like, on Tuesday, when you met with them, if you had said, yep, the academic building, how long, like, how much time do they need to turn around with a plan?
Probably about 30 days. To really get the, the official drawings and things that they do. Does that sound right to you, Nick? About 30 days?
Yeah, and, and also to be clear, it's not just the academic building because there's a lot of parts and pieces where again, we've gotta really think through how we are going to fit all of this into the overall master plan. So it's not just like a main focus on, let's just get the classrooms done in the academic piece. It's understanding the parts and the pieces and how it's all gonna fit in with the master plan and making sure that we're setting ourselves up to be successful moving forward and minimize the cost impact because there's, I'll tell you, doing things separately, it is gonna cost more money. Now, there could be changes in the economy, prices could go down. I doubt it, but there could be. But when you do things separately, um, it is gonna cost more money. It is gonna take more time. But we don't have an open checkbook like a lot of other schools have the luxury. So this is the, this is where we've gotta spend so much time on this planning piece. And so there's just so many parts and pieces, kind of back to what I think it was, you know, Kristen and Ellen and Leanna had said where it's, we've gotta do so many different models to understand if we don't do the gym, then we're paying for Four Kicks. So how does that affect the bottom line? How much money can the school save to get to another point? So there's just so many different parts and pieces that it's so tough to nail it down. And that's why I, and again, you know, to echo what Ellen said, I think that, um, uh, Liz had a great, uh, call is saying priorities. What are, what are we gonna prioritize? Cause we are not choosing one or the other, but we do have to start to move in a direction. And right now, we're just, we're moving, we're moving, just, it's, we're really not moving. It's almost analysis paralysis at this point.
Yeah, and, and it's, they're, they're at a point where it's like, no, we can't do that. Nope, we can't do that. Nope, we can't do that. And, and so it's, it's, it's almost like the, the analysis part is done. It's like, no, we can't do what we've been trying to do. And no matter how we try to configure it or how we try to puzzle it together, this is something that we can prioritize. I believe that we can make that work as we create and we will prior before we bring it to all of you. You know, an idea of how we can make it all work. But, you know, Maura talks about the capital campaign and, you know, long-term and millions and millions of dollars over six years. Wowza. You know, I look at it more as, you know, paying off portions of the mortgage and refinancing and refinancing some of that. I think it's more realistic. I think there's certainly money we can fundraise. But we all will only know in time. We'll work through it. It's disappointing. It's disappointing.
I think.
We hope.
No, I think we, you, you described it very well, you and Nick. You, Ellen, you've described it really well. We, we've tried everything we can to do to get our initial phase one to be the, the traffic pattern around the buildings, the gym and the science labs. And you've done, you've stood on your head. You've done everything possible and we basically said, the mission, the answer I'm hearing is we can't fit all three in phase one. So what are we, so we need to come up with a plan that does as much as, that we're breaking phase one into phase one and phase two. So I think we'll, we do need it, in, we do need a master plan for the whole campus for the longer term. I'm hearing that from other board members as well. Figure out how, and I do appreciate that we have a spot where the gym is targeted. So I think that that's what I'm hearing. I think we need to make a decision based on what we've got. And the, one other thing I've had is, you know, just from the conversations that we've had in the board meetings over time is the biggest, the biggest challenge that that we, the school has faced from a facilities perspective is we do not have sufficient classrooms. We, we are hundred, like 95, 98% booked every single period of every day. So we have no extra classrooms for anything. And so adding additional academic classrooms will be the biggest game changer. And we will have to figure out how to continue to do that and rent, rent space from, and rents, we can continue to rent space from Four Kicks to bridge the gap until we can afford our own gymnasium. Cause we can't do the opposite, which would be to, uh, build a gym and then, uh, we can't rent space for classrooms is the other alternative. But I do think, that's, that's my thoughts. So I think that this is the right focus. The demand for additional classrooms that we need will make a significant difference for the school, improve our program and we can figure out how to.
Improve our program and we can figure out how to rent space from, figure out how best to rent space from four kicks as a bridge until we can get to a gym.
Um, very quickly, I do want to say we have reached the end of the time that was allocated for the executive director report. We are now in the executive director Q and A section, which I think still fits here. I just wanted to keep the board informed.
Um, actually Zach, I, I'd be actually interested in, in your opinion on this as a, as a staff member who lives in the, in the 201 building. And, and just to, to add a, a piece of data to what Roger said, and thank you Roger, um, is that the classrooms are all at 98% capacity every period of the day. Um, it makes scheduling a beast and, and it means the adults are on top of each other. But Zach, love to hear your opinion on this.
Uh, very much I have to say, preface this with, I'm speaking only from my own perspective here. Um, I've not had a chance to talk to any other faculty member on this. Um, I definitely feel the crunch of the classrooms. I teach in four classrooms on most days, moving between them. I do not have a base of oper- operations. I do not have a single classroom and it does make some of the teaching difficult. Um, I know this is not a, a thing that's just mine. I know it is a difficulty that many teachers face. Uh, and I have the highest respect for our scheduling team? Who does some truly incredible Tetris-ing with the schedule to make this work. Uh, speaking from a personal, uh, perspective, the more classrooms I think would do a lot to relieve some of the burden on teachers like me that are moving around so much. Um, it in some way restricts some of the things I'm able to do with the students in that anything I want to do that requires materials, I have to carry from room to room, upstairs, downstairs. It, it can be, it can be difficult at times.
In three minutes there.
In three minutes.
Four minutes.
Very quickly.
And not to mention the fact that health insurance premiums are gonna go up because our four, four faculty members are lugging their stuff like all around campus.
I'm gonna have wheelie carts, Maura. You know, it's better for the back.
Yeah, but still those stairs, I mean.
On the upside, Maura, it's cardio. Sorry Zach, I'm sure you don't need to hear that.
No, it's fine.
Other questions or comments?
I'm also, I was just gonna say Zach, I, I'll be giving a, a little debrief to the staff on Tuesday.
Um, so I guess at this point, so this is not a vote, but we're trying to reach a board consensus as to which of the three options is the direction we wish to proceed in. Um, I think probably best would be a show of hands would be a way to show board consensus. So, so just to, just to re- review, the three options are A, focus on academics first. B, focus on the gym first. C, uh, raise more money and try to do both. So who is in favor of option A? So, how best to record this? So I guess maybe we can just do a roll, Sarah, maybe just best to do a roll call? Does, you have people say A, B, or C?
But, but all we're doing again, just to be clear, Roger, was we're just saying what direction we want to go for the next 30 days to come back with a plan with finances and all the different things, right? So all we're saying is the next time we're going back to these design phases to look at one or two or three, right? And at that point, we can ask the further questions. You've gone through finance committee. You've gone to the bank. We've done everything we can from a total thing and then we'll make a decision on, on path forward, right?
It's likely then it will take a little bit longer than 30 days.
Yeah, a, a certain amount of time, no, probably no less than 30 days, but some are, you know.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Right, but they'll, but we're giving them, what we are giving a direction is to say, what is priority one? You know, so the, so what comes back to us in 30 to 60 days will be a detailed breakdown of priority one.
Right, and what I, what I didn't hear, and again, maybe I do is, is that, um, the option, and, and I'll paraphrase it because we're not going to detail. The option of academic with the slab was not one of the options. Well, all I'm saying is that we're, we're not saying academic only and then later think about a gym. Is there a third option of academic thinking about the gym? As part of the, the, this, this design? Does that make sense?
That is, that is the direction.
Okay, the, the number one is that. The number one is academic with the slab. Uh, uh, no, whatever, no, it's called a slab, but with the anticipation of it's not a academic only approach. It's an academic with a second phase later to add a gym to it.
How about if we, how about if we switch it up a little bit? So the approach is the master plan to phase everything that we need to do.
Okay.
Number two is whether we focus on really looking at the academics piece? And getting that as the priority as part of the master? Knowing that coming in as a close second or close third is going to be the gym. But again, with the conversations that we had at facility, we just, we know it can't happen. But we are absolutely taking everything into consideration for the master plan. So I think it's, I think really the vote ends up being, is the focus that we're providing to the design team? The direction we're telling them is to focus more on, besides the entire thing, focus more on the classrooms or focus more on the gym? Just the direction that we're providing.
So just, excuse me, Nick, just, that was great. I just want to make sure I get this correctly. You're saying one option is the academic with the anticipation of building phases, right? The next one is academic priority. The third one is gym priority.
No, I think, so, no, sorry. So maybe I, so this is on me. So the overall priority is, so the overall goal, no matter what, is going to be both. It's a master plan, but we've gotta put a priority on focusing on the academics, then the athletics, or the athletics, then the academics. That's what we need to decide today. So what comes, is it athletics then academics or academics then athletics?
And, and just to be clear, it's not a vote. It's really just providing guidance to, um, the project team to say, which direction do we want them to spend the next 30 to 60 days on?
Yes.
Well, it kind of sounds like all the planning that they do now would be part of the additional planning to do the second half, right? Cause really what we're doing is authorizing the team to go build more detailed plans to get better costs, right? So it, it almost sounds like it doesn't matter because the building is gonna be what it is, the way, the building, the way you guys have presented it to us, right? So we've kind of changed the structure of the building to be this, you know, originally we were gonna do the white building. So we're kind of getting both at the same time, which is we can't use the white building, which is completely changing the entire project as far as the board and everybody's concerned, right? So if, if you guys can confirm, Ellen and Nick and team, that doing the planning for this first part of the academics, which is ultimately gonna be the subfloor of the gym or what have you, it's just gonna be the first part of the planning and no matter what, it's all gonna be the same. And I don't think it's, it matters really if we're saying academics or not, right? Because they still have to do that part first, right? Which is how much is the academic side gonna cost? Is that true?
It's, it, the way, there's a couple of different options, but more or less, yes, yes. More or less, that is, that is correct.
Yeah, so from, so from that perspective, I mean, I think that the, the, there absolutely needs to be some deep dives on the finances because of four kicks. And, and you know, I, I don't want to get into it here, but I have other ideas and questions, of course. Ellen, you know I do. Um, but I, but I feel like, yeah, we should lean towards just saying, they should just go forward so that we can simultaneously look at the finances and, and be drilling in at the options together as a team. If that helps anybody who wasn't thinking about that. Keep moving. Keep the project on. So I guess if that means academics, it means academics first, right? Just to move forward and just get the planning started at that level. We just don't want to waste the money. I think that's what everybody's concerned is wasting the planning dollars that the architects and everybody knows that.
Yeah, and right now they're, they're in a holding pattern right now.
Yep.
I think since we have the athletic facilities at four kicks, right? Like, so I'm clearly still an all, like I'm an and person, not a but. Um, or an or, but if we have, if we have, we have four kicks. We have a space. We need the academic space first. So in that regard, yes, as long as we are planning and as long as I get to steer the capital campaign committee in the way of like, let's look big picture, I think we can do better and bigger than
Just that, yeah.
Then yes.
I agree. I agree. Good way to put it, Maura.
And if someone finds five to 10 million dollars under their mattress, then, you know, we won't even have to worry about this.
Listen, if I trip and fall into a vat of thousand dollar bills, if those don't exist, then yes, I will send it our way. After I, you know, get a couple of things. It's fine.
Uh, other people have, I think, I think we're demonstrating consensus as to what, what the board has. Does other people have comments? Ellen, do you have what you need to go forward?
I do, as long as everyone's okay. Yes. All right. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. I'll let them know.
Yeah, I do, I do think the one key takeaway that I heard from this was the board, board members are looking for how this fits into the master plan for the, for the overall campus. It's not, not gonna just do phase one and stop.
No, I can promise you, what we talked about today was definitely about the master plan and then figuring out what parts and pieces are gonna happen first. Keeping in mind that everything does go together. Everything is connected.
It's always been a phased project and it's, it's always gonna have been bigger than, than, um, than we ever were ever gonna be able to do, right? So it was always gonna be that. The thing that's different here, as Kristen points out, we can't do anything to 165. We thought we could. So that creates a whole new building that we had never discussed before. And, and that's the difference there.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think, I think, yes, I agree. Other, other questions for Ellen for non-building things from the rest of your ED report?
Whatever else I said.
All the other great news. They're second in the, second in the, in the state. Um, many pieces of great news, so.
Yeah, we're, we're busy finishing up the school year. That, that's all. It's, it's been, uh, it's been a great, it's been a great year. Really, it has. Good year.
All right. Um, next up is a faculty report. Zach?
Okay, um, so not very much, uh, this month to report. Uh, mainly, you know, we're coming back from April break. Things are settling back in. MCAS is in full swing down in the lower school. Uh, definitely a huge show of gratitude from all of the teachers to Sarah for the absolutely ridiculous amount of work she does. I'm pretty sure she has a cloning machine. There has to be multiple of her. Um, the real only thing that was brought forward, which is more day-to-day, and I've talked to Ellen about this, was a request from some teachers in the lower school. We have, since there's so many other, every other day classes, uh, the MCAS schedule can end up kind of throwing those classes off a lot. Exploring the idea of turning a couple of those days into half-days, but that's a thing like Sarah would know better than logistics and stuff like that. But that was a thing that's been brought up as, could we look into this? Uh, but beyond that, everybody's doing pretty well. I've heard generally positive comments. The school, you know, doing great at the moment. We're, we're, we're good.
Thanks. Questions for Zach? All right, Bella, parent report?
All quiet on the parent front.
Wow, that's starting concise. Um, anything to discuss, further discussion for any of the reports? Okay, done with the reports, on to chair business. Uh, we are still planning, uh, date TBD in the May-June timeframe for a board offsite strategic planning meeting. More news coming soon. Uh, like to, I'm seeking volunteers for the ED evaluation task force. At the end of each year, we evaluate our executive director. Raul and myself will be part of the team. I'm seeking a third member. Liz has done yeoman's work in the past, but we need a new person to join us.
And I'm happy to help out before I depart, so, um, it's, it's up to you guys what you want to do.
So if, if you're interested in joining our ED evaluation task force, uh, please contact me. I don't need to volunteer tonight. Uh, we, we have the beginnings already set, so. Raul, Liz and myself will be the initial, will be the, will be the, will be the first half. But Liz will be finishing her term at the end of June. So we'll need a, a third person to finish the delivery of the ED evaluation. Um, finally, uh, see how this, this goes. We're thinking of development. We are looking to brainstorm on, um, you know, contacts, business in particular, or foundation contacts uh, that, that we know, that we as board members or anybody in the audience wishes to share and organizations that we should contact. So I'm gonna attempt to share a screen here. Microsoft Word document one. All right. Share that. So you should just see it's, uh, hopefully everyone sees that. Um, so I'm basically looking, looking from the audience members to try to list, uh, organizations that we should contact.
I think too, Roger, Ellen sent out a list to everyone on the board as well, right? The, uh, Google, the Google list, right? And that Google list was the initial list, right?
Right, so if, if it's already on the Google list, uh, don't re, don't re-add it. If we end up with duplicates, fine, but I'm using this as an additional chance for board members to brainstorm on organizations or companies that we should be reaching out to.
So these are just ideas because I, I don't know if I have anyone that I know, you know, directly. But what about, um, like even half, like, like UMass Memorial, like the hospital system? We have a big teaching hospital in Worcester, which is, you know, we're math and science focused. Uh, I don't know what their, um, you know, their capital giving is all, you know, investment is all about, but maybe that's something that we could explore. Um, something like-
Bella, is that, Bella, is that you talking? Sorry, I can't see you. Yeah, we actually have a contact there who does the fundraising for them, so we can reach out to them again.
That's great. So that's UMass Memorial?
Yeah, the university, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the main school, yeah. Yeah, the other, in, kind of in line with that is, you know, all the universities, there's a ton of, uh, universities in our area too. WPI, Clark, they all have a lot of, uh, science foundation in their, in their core. So I think that they're also a good partnership opportunity.
I mean, we don't even have to stick across everybody, right? Like we, we could go, there's so many schools in Boston and there's Mass General, Brigham. I mean, the biggest hospital system probably in the Northeast with lots and lots of money. I mean, they might be, I, again, it would be things we would have to explore and, and research.
Yeah, yeah, we're just in brainstorming, so there's no bad answers at this point. Um.
I think it's difficult, Roger, to have this conversation now because there's also already an existing list that Ellen's been working on for a really long time.
Well, it's okay. Well, just, if we duplicate, we duplicate. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll union them together and, and Ellen will, Ellen and the capital campaign team will work from there.
Intel, I did not see on the list.
I'll also throw Microsoft, because that was on the list either.
I don't know if we know anyone that works at Microsoft that could help us with that.
Um, I think I sent this to Ellen already, but I didn't really see a lot of the big name biotechs like Bristol-Myers Squibb, Alkemys. I mean, there's a ton. Um, I'm doing a lot of work with my wife's company right now, so Amgen, I think, is now on the list. Um, a ton of these, ton of these folks are looking to create these public-private partnerships. Um, but I didn't see a lot. I'm happy to make a list. I just don't have connections to them all other than Amgen.
It seems like we should make the list and then reach out even more broadly to see if, if there are contacts. So I think the key is just to get the list made and then we can figure out if there are contacts, but let's not just focus on who has contacts and who doesn't. Cause there might be some that, that we're not considering.
Yeah, yeah, but the purpose of this is strictly, um, company made, company organization generation. We can work on, you know, given the list of companies, we can then mine our contact list to see who, who knows somebody in, in them. So I'm not, not focused on getting contacts for tonight's, uh, session.
And I, I, I think, um, Betsy might have already shot this one down, but Fidelity wasn't on there, like all the big finance organizations. Um, but I don't, there's something about Fidelity or State Street.
I thought I saw Fidelity on that list.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Sorry. I see it.
Yeah.
But what about State Street? That's a big one.
It seems we've, uh, reached a quiet point here, so I'd encourage board members to review the, uh, list sent out by Ellen and add, uh, companies and contact information to that. And, uh, I'll also send this out if you, so we can elaborate on the, the universities, biotech companies, hospitals, et cetera, that we can build up an explicit list for the ones that we have, that we've got groups of. Does that make sense? Take it quiet is equal to yes. File save.
So I guess I, this is Bella. I have a question on, um, you know, and I know the capital campaign committee probably has their hands full. I, I, I'm just wondering, you know, we have the, we'll come up with this big list, but it's a lot of work to go and reach out. Um, you know, and do the research and find the right contact, uh, you, you know, and I, I'm just wondering, like, who's doing that? Is, is that something that would need to be parsed out among all of us? Um, you know, how do we get this done? So, so that, you know, there is a very active outreach, uh, to all these firms. It, you know, it just really can't fall on a couple of people and it just seems that, um, it, it seems like we're all going to have to really dig in and, and kind of participate in, in, in this, you know, in fundraising.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bella, this has been, it's a really interesting process, um, because this, you know, this foundations and a lot of what Betsy does is she goes on and sees if these companies have grants and things like that. And some of them have very clear programs, some of them don't. Some of them have very clear programs, but we don't fit the profile of what they're interested in doing. A lot of these places won't give money to what they call capital campaigns. So it's really challenging. What we haven't really been able to do yet is getting the, the right connections into these companies that, that they'll have us come in and visit and talk about it. Another piece that, that I was talking to Mark about this week is that when we, when we're talking about like putting a Raytheon sign on the side of the 165 building, right? That's advertisement. That's marketing. That's not grants and foundations. And so we've got to figure out too, that there's two sides to this, um, because there was a, you know, we were kind of hoping for one particular company that they would, they would be interested in sponsoring the building. Um, but, but we approached it from the grant foundation side and we really should have gone to the marketing side. Um, so that we're, we're learning some as we go along the way, but you know, Betsy's been a, a great help, but you know, she doesn't have the contacts in these companies necessarily.
So Ellen, I think, but I think the question I heard asked from Bella was how do we, how do we leverage a list? How, how can we help you in the cap, how can, how can we, the board and members of the public, help you in the capital campaign in reaching out? So it's, you know, clearly you're not going to contact every single person individually. So how do we help?
Well, uh, you know, Ben has made a lot of, of good points around, um, LinkedIn. You know, do you have any initial contact? I don't have LinkedIn, so I don't know the lingo, but the initial contacts and then secondary contacts and things like that. And to be, to be willing to make those phone calls and say, hey, you, I knows you had a friend who's connected to, you know, Microsoft or whatever. Um, and then to try to help bring us in to the right people. And you may not know the right people, but those people might know the right people. Um, and I think just wherever you go and talking about the campaign and that you are associated, you're on the board of the school and they've got this capital campaign. It's a great project. You want to come down and see it, um, see what we're, we're doing and, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a process and we're, we're working through it, but we need, I need face to face with people. And that's, that's what we haven't really gotten so far is being able to really get out there and promote ourselves. Um, we're working right now on, on a, um, communication plan and Laura's been involved with this, um, around, you know, getting it communicated out to the community. Um, and us starting to really launch that. And once again, as this project has now changed and we don't exactly know where it's going to land, we're going to have to update all of the campaign materials that, you know, that we've created as well, which is easy enough to do, but takes time. So I, I don't know if I have a real answer for Bella, except that just, I guess, always be mindful that this is going on. And when you're at a restaurant, you're talking to people, friends, social media, um, is to always have, have us in the back of your mind. Um, and, and, you know, also yourselves, you know, how, how can maybe you personally make a donation as well to the capital campaign? Um, as we move forward this year or next, or, you know, be willing to, um, to have a, a regular monthly donation sent over to the, to the school. We're, we're looking at about $75,000 that we've brought in so far. Um, but you know, that's, that's a, uh, yeah, well, you know, it's an itty bitty number. It's an itty bitty number. And places we've hoped to get a lot more money, we're not. Um, they, they hasn't really come through or it's coming through really slowly. Um, but this is going to be a process as, as more articulated earlier.
Yeah, well, well, I'm definitely personally ready and available to help to go to any company that I have contacts with and I assume that other board members are equally willing, so please ask, you know.
Please offer. Um, you know, that's part of it, right, is, is just, um, keeping us in mind and saying, drop me an email, drop me a text and say, you know, hey, Ellen, I, you know, I was out the other night with friends and I have a, a friend who works at such and such. They might know a good person to talk to. You want to talk to them.
I mean, I hate to, uh, put this pressure on the board, but I think, I think we have, each one of us has to make a goal for ourselves. Otherwise, we're, it's not going to happen. And, um, you know, we all have our lives to go on and well, we meet during the board meetings, we talk about this. But unless we don't follow through, uh, it's going to be hard to make those connections. So I, you know, I don't know how we make ourselves like accountable to, you know, reaching our contacts. You know, Ellen, I, I tried with the CFO Blue Cross and, um, unfortunately it didn't work out, but you know, I did feel like she left the door open for something else. And so it's just something.
Open the door again, Bella.
Yeah, we need to explore. So I just, you know, um, and I, I feel that, you know, if, if we don't make ourselves accountable, this might get dropped. You know, we, we need, we need to keep on going. We need to keep on talking about it. Um, and as Laura says, and as we just talked about, uh, you know, approving this focus on education, but the, the long-term plan. I think we just need to always be thinking about fundraising and cap and, uh, you know, who we know. And it, we need, we need to like change how we're thinking. We need to constantly be talking about it, like every time we meet, that should be, you know, we should be talking about that.
Yeah, I think we, we may have said this, oh, maybe well over a year ago now, but you know, we're in COVID time. Um, the, in order for us to be able to put something out there on LinkedIn, and we can be very, very good at this. I'm looking at more here, even though I can't see her on my Brady Bunch screen. We need to have some peer material with some stories that we can post and that we can direct that's very professionally done. So that we can have that out there. We need stories. We need to have, um, we need to have the projects that the students have done, the successes that they've done, the things that we need and really to have. And I think the capital campaign had said this before too, in order to get the funds in, we need to have real specific items that we're driving towards, not just a generic campaign of we need $5 million. And so I think we have to have those things developed and maybe the initial planning, I agree, we have to do the brainstorming of who we're going to connect. It doesn't all have to be done, you know, serially. It has to kind of be done simultaneously and divide and conquer and figure out how to get those things done. You know, I'm connected to a lot of people. Bella's connected to a lot of people, like we were saying, but we've, but we've got to have something to publish. We can't just go say, hey, I'm on the board of this charter school. They're amazing. Can you give me a million dollars? Just, you know what I mean? I don't know what it should be because I'm not, that's not my area of expertise at all. Um, but if someone were to give me the material, it would be real easy to, to let that get out there really fast.
So the website actually looks great and there's a capital campaign page there as well, and all the printed materials that we've done are, are all on the page with photos and all. And Mike Finkel's done a fantastic job, you know, really highlighting, excuse me, and showcasing our kids' work, um, on, on the website. But as I said, a lot of it needs Kristen to be updated now. Um, you know.
I mean, there are, yeah, I was just going to say there are PR pieces that are on like, you know, our students, where they went to school, where they're going to school or where they got accepted. Um, I, which I think are very impressive. Um, and I, yeah, so I don't know, I mean, even like next board meeting, even showing that here on the screen. So not only for us to look at it together, but whoever outside parent viewers were looking at it. They can also see like some of the material Ellen that you guys have all put together, um, front and center dur- during a board meeting. I think we're just, I remind folks, wow, this is, because it's impressive, like when you look at the list. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think just constantly reminding ourselves that it is out there, showing it at the next meeting, um, just so we all see it. Um, I don't know if everyone has had a chance to look at it even, but maybe the next time we meet, it would be nice to look at it together.
I'm going to put the link in the chat. Just keep in mind, now we need to update some of this, but you'll see what's there. And if you see those things that are missing, please, you know, send me a, a text and, and say, hey, what about this? I could use this piece to, to show to someone.
Ellen, would it be reasonable that we could get a, um, a presentation at next, at next board meeting?
A presentation of?
Of the, you know, basically what Ella, what Bella was talking about, the.
Yeah, and I guess I wasn't necessarily even saying a presentation. It would just be literally showing your screen and, 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 you know, the documents that are online.
Yeah.
Um, you know, like Ellen, I know you sent the link. How many of us are really going to click on that link? And how many observers are really clicking on the link and just even showing it at the meeting in a public way, I think would be, you know, I think would be useful.
Sure, sure. But Bella, I will say that even as we were talking, I was able to reach out to a few people and start to send out the link. So it was really useful to have that conversation. Uh, but I think that Kristen has a good point with regard to creating some of the materials. That said, just looking at that website tells me that we could start to share some of it on LinkedIn and start to reach out on the network. So I think the message is get going, everybody. And I think that's pretty, it's loud and clear. So thank you.
Um, I have a, uh, and I know Dawn just took her camera off, but I didn't, I know she was able to get some donations. I didn't know if she could kind of explain like how that happened with your wife's, uh, company.
Uh, yeah, no, um, I was having a sip of water, so sometimes, sometimes I get self-conscious. Um, so my wife works at Amgen. She is a scientist and does many things. One of the things she does is a lab manager role. So when they move labs or change things, and that's really all I know of science, um, she is in charge of that. And she's also on the environmental team at her work. So she started to learn what would happen. Um, and they could probably do a better job with their science consumables, which I understand we spend a lot of money on. So, long story short, I sent emails to Ellen, um, because I wouldn't contact a faculty member directly, uh, without asking. Got connected to Mrs. J, uh, Mrs. Jagulovski, who's amazing. Oh my God. Um, and we, um, went into Amgen on the little bus twice, once over vacation. So kudos to her for giving up a vacation day. I thought that was amazing. Um, and we just got, it's hard to explain, but I want to say 2,500 pounds of science consumables. So I won't know what they are, but I'll just say things like flasks and syringes, heavier things than that. Um, it was so much fun. My, yeah, my son was with us the second day because it was school vacation and thank God, um, because he's very strong. Um, so we had a great time. So basically, Amgen is this giant biotech company. They would love public, private, partnership, corporate kind of things. Um, and they were, they were actually in the middle of creating this other really cool program, uh, SAM for surplus asset management. And we are right now the only school anywhere approved in that. Um, so Mrs. J will get a link to that. And when they have surplus microscopes, um, we're working on getting a liquid chromatograph. Again, I don't know, something really cool, um, donated. And we're going to try to pick that up with three more pallets of stuff next week. So that's probably longer than you wanted, but it's great. Um, it's multiple tens of thousands of dollars. Um, and really it just involved my wife, kind of like what Samini just said, just, just working on it, right? Like she's a great parent. She's a huge scientist. She's always been a part of Drew's schooling. So just giving back. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's just so much fun, right? So, so yeah, there's, and so you should see the third floor. Thank God we're not building there because I filled it with science consumables with Mrs. J and her husband.
That's awesome, Dawn.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome, Dawn.
Well, it takes a village, right?
All right. So I think we have, you know, just a challenge to you, all the board members to look around and see if you can with your contact list, find something that where other companies or foundations can give back. It doesn't necessarily like, like Dawn's effort here was not, doesn't directly support the capital campaign, but it gets us useful stuff and, you know, maybe that we have to spend less on flask and, and stuff and we can spend more on buildings.
Well, that's right. It's gifts in kind, right? It's all, all, while materials that Christie and everyone would use now that money can be converted to the, the campaign.
Exactly. All right. Uh, any questions for me before we go to committee reports? Uh, committee report, Jill for governance.
Okay, um, so Sheila hasn't joined us, I guess. She said she might join late, but, um, the governance committee met April 13th. Um, we will be updating you on the new candidate onboarding checklist next meeting. Um, we also discussed the release of executive session minutes. And there's a memo that was included in the package from governance committee to the full board recommending that we release 47 sets of executive session minutes. Um, now I know you said there weren't any votes. I think technically we were supposed to, um, I think what we'll have to do next month then is vote on the governance committee's recommendations. Once everybody's had a chance to review the memo, but I can kind of summarize the memo because we really are going to release everything except for two sections of meeting minutes in, let's see. except for two sections of meeting minutes in, let's see, June of 2021 and May of 2020. And we would just suggest that we redact, we'll release the minutes, but we'll actually redact two sections that were relating to a negotiation strategy, where I would say that giving up the information about that strategy would affect potential negotiations in the future because we're negotiating the collective bargaining agreement every two years. And so two of those executive session minutes kind of gave away our negotiation strategy, I guess you'd say. So that's the reason to recommend that reduction. But other than that, everything else has been resolved. The real property, obviously, and the litigation prior to the, um, search for real property is over. And then, you know, every two years, we negotiate the collective bargaining agreement. And like I said, most of that can be released unless it's going to detrimentally affect negotiations in the future. So does that sound like a good plan? We'll like give everyone a chance to review it, I guess. And then the recommendations, once approved, would put all 47 sets of minutes on the consent agenda, agenda to be approved. Does that make sense?
Yes. We'll have a vote, we'll have a vote next, next.
Yeah, so I guess if anyone has any specific questions about the, the memo and the recommendations, once reviewed, we can answer them in May, assuming everyone votes to take these recommendations, then we can vote those whole 47 sets of minutes to be approved. And then they'd be available to the public. And then the other part of that was Sheila drafted a disclosure because it turned out that we were missing 35 sets of executive session minutes. Now, 30 of them were between 2015 and 2017, and we just weren't able to locate them. The board members that had taken them or not taken them just didn't reply, didn't have them, didn't know what we were talking about. So we have to disclose that we're missing those. Oh, and then five were from 2018 and 2019. We just, we just couldn't find them. Um, so Sheila has a disclosure that will list all those missing minutes, which I think is just for information. I think it's just to put those two documents together because clearly from 2015 to end of 2021, we should have reviewed these minutes. And the policy going forward will be to do it every six months or so. But, so then that disclosure was not in the packet today. So I think, is that something we could put in the packet for next month? Just make sure everybody looks at it quickly in case they have any questions so that we can kind of get rid of all of these issues at once next meeting. And then we promise going forward, we'll, we'll review executive session minutes more frequently. You'll have a short, like probably more detailed memo as to why things should be released or what's, you know, still being withheld. And also Sheila, I think still had to include the dates in that disclosure. So we'll get that out for the next meeting. And then the final thing we did, what did we do? Um, we were talking about board recruitment strategies. I don't know. I don't really have anything to report on that. Maybe Sheila would have more to report on that. Honestly, I don't remember. We were just talking about strategies and does anyone else on the governance committee remember? If we came up with anything, Samini?
I, I, sorry, hold on. Let me get my camera on. Okay. Once again, I think this is the one where we wanted some posting that, you know, essentially content that we could post. And we've talked about that before. So maybe nominating someone to work on it and both kinds of communications, ones around the Capital Campaign as well as the posting for board recruitment would be nice. And I think they're somewhat aligned, but I think that they're essentially things that we can all make it easier for us and for parents to reach out in their network as we recruit and as we look for donors as well.
Exactly. Um, yeah, and I apologize. I wasn't planning to report. Sheila asked me last minute. So I think that's all I have for today.
I can give a, so we have met as the Board Recruiting Task Force and we've come up with a couple of action items. Um, one is we're going to ask, be asking the governance committee to work on the description of the board, assess the board needs for next year as far as the attributes of, that we're looking for as far as candidates for trying to recruit beyond being great people that work on a team, you know. Uh, Sheila agreed to take that on and bring that to governance for, and we hope to plan in the uh, May board meeting to have a report out. So we'll have a little more detail. So, you know, if you, if someone approaches you as a board member and says, you know, what are you looking for? Well, we're looking for X. So that will, I think that will help, help address that, help address the, you know, the particular needs of the board beyond, beyond good members that are working for, in the best interest of AMSA. Bella, did you wish to say anything more? I think there was one more email that went out.
Um, yes. So we also talked about drafting an email, which I did and sent it to Mike Finkel, um, reaching, you know, asking the AMSA parents if anyone was interested in being on a committee. Um, and we got, we got, I think, six or seven bites that I think, because they're responding to Sheila. Um, and I think she's going to direct the, you know, folks that might be interested to the appropriate committee that they're, that they're interested in being on.
I can read what she already has.
Oh, cool. So, yeah, so, so that happened really quickly because, you know, the Black email went out today and we got these responses today. Um, so I think it's just reminding the parent community that there are these committees. And, you know, if you have a skill set that could contribute and, you know, and you're interested, we would really, you know, you know, like to hear from you. So I think, yeah, hopefully that will work out.
The big takeaway for the parent community or anybody listening to our meeting is that if you're interested in serving on any of our standing committees, which is development, finance, governance and education, that you should reach out to Sheila, our, our governance chair, and she will direct the interested parties to the chairs of the, of the respective committees. Jill, anything else for governance?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for getting us, getting us in line on exec, on executive meeting minutes and keeping us in line for the future. Okay. Governance, finance, Kristin.
Okay, so finance met early again this month so that we could have our minutes posted and not have to get into the full detail at this time. Uh, but I wanted to point out a couple of items that we did talk about. One is that we started to look at the budget. Uh, we have a tight timeline and Leanna's working through that. So we had a quick overview and we're going to get through the details in May and tentatively present at the May board meeting for a vote on the budget for next year. And the other thing to point out, for those of you interested in looking at the finances, um, DCE did provide an update to the tuition reimbursement. Uh, it came down slightly from the last one, but still above budget. So, uh, good news there that we, we held, uh, still above budget. And the next update is due in a couple of months. So we'll see what happens next. And that's what I wanted to point out.
Questions for Kirsten? Thanks, Kristin. Uh, next up, Development Committee, Ben.
Yep. Good evening. Uh, so, I mean, we talked about the main topic. We did meet this year, this week, or this month, this year, this week, this month, right? This month. And, um, we had Betsy join us. Betsy gave us an update for about 25 minutes. We walked through all the different activities that the development, or the Capital Campaign Committee has been doing. Uh, we talked through some ideas that could be helpful there. One of the ideas is what the activity that Roger did, Betsy had, you know, recommended to us that the chair of the board do the effort that we did, talk through some of the ideas. Um, the LinkedIn piece, just to, you know, further clarify, was sent out by Ellen this, this week. Um, you know, was the idea was that that's the list that people are working on to look at those. And my idea was just to have a link so you can click on it and see in your LinkedIn profile what already contacts you had for that list. You could also add more companies to it. As you add more companies, you can add your, your contacts to it. Uh, Betsy's been managing the contacts at the companies. So there's a whole database and a whole structure there that the Capital Campaign Committee has been doing for communications and keeping track of all that. So, um, yeah, again, we just went through the updates from the Capital Campaign and, and talked through some of those. And, and we've got most of those updates tonight. So that's about all the report I have for this month.
Okay, Roger mentioned that he just stepped away. So I will give the update on Ed Committee. Um, and we will, Sarah, if you can just put it for, um, May, we will do the presentation of the exit survey feedback in May. Um, we were going to do it this evening, but, um, excuse me. Aside from the fact that I have very bad allergies, um, Mike Nemrocki is off um, doing a citywide spelling bee. He's a judge tonight. So I would prefer to do the presentation with Mike. So, um, but Marlboro Public Schools, AMSA and Assabod Valley are participating in a citywide spelling bee this evening over at the Apex Center. So he is one of the judges for that. So, um, we did complete the exit survey. We did, actually, we met on the 14th. We did review it with the Ed Committee. Um, we have a lot of great information for all of you. Um, so I will plan to share that, um, at the May, uh, meeting. Uh, I did just want to point out something, um, and Dawn, this is just tagging on to, to the update you just gave on Amgen. Um, it would probably be worthwhile, and this just came from one of my, um, Ed Committee members, um, texted me to say that it would be great if something like that could be highlighted on the website and maybe even like a, um, a video done to interview you and Ms. Jay to talk about that because that might give other people ideas about sort of generating that, that gift and kind, uh, idea. So that was just something that, that Lauren Bechline had texted to me while we were covering that. And I thought it was a great idea. So I wanted to make sure that we just kind of captured that and figured out a way, whether it's a, something written up on the website or even a, a video interview with the two of you to discuss that.
Uh, yeah, Mike Finkel, Ellen put him on that right away. So I think that's a great point. And I think the more we can thank people publicly when they help us. I think you're, you're singing right to my ears on that one. So I, I'm not sure I want to be in a video, but I'll do just about anything else I can.
Dawn's already given us some great photos and requested that we just wait till all the donations are in. And Christie still, she, Dawn came up with a part two, um, today. So, um, we'll, we'll put it all together and do it all at once. And I know she's already been talking to Mike about it. So great ideas though. Awesome.
Okay, and that's it for Ed Committee.
Thanks, Liz. Any questions for Education Committee?
No, I just want to say thank you, Liz. I know that Mike came to me right at the end of the day, very concerned, uh, that he wasn't going to be here to help. So I, I just sent him a text so he'll know.
Okay, and I sent him an email to say that I, I punted till next month. So, um, I just feel like he was, um, involved in all aspects of it, um, not just on the Ed Committee side, but also with the, with the Principal's Council and, um, and student government. So I really felt like he should be here for, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, one more thing that I thought of, um, is going back to Chair business is that the survey, this parent survey has been launched and is out there. I encourage parents to respond to it. We, we'll likely have, um, a preliminary report in, in the May timeframe just for the, for the survey responses without the written information and then a probably more detailed one in June. But I'll defer to Raul if he picks a different schedule than that. But for parents, please respond to the task, the survey that's out there. It'll come out, email says panorama on it. So with that, anything else that was missed in the meeting before we move to the wrap-up section of the meeting? So the summary of previous action items I still have on my plate with the Board Strategic Planning Task Force to plan a meeting in the May-June timeframe. That's still, that's still what my target is. It would be collecting, Sarah, at this point, we'll be collecting candidate agenda items for the May meeting. Um, already from the board topic calendar, we have, as mentioned by Kristin, we have the budget approval for next year. Um, if the staff and PTO is ready, we are looking, we'll be looking, looking for faculty and parent rep nominations from the respective organizations. If governance is ready, I don't know. We are looking, typically we target doing a board self-assessment. Uh, I mentioned the survey task force and we have, and we will be starting the ED evaluation staff survey likely in that, in the May timeframe.
Yeah, and Roger, while you were gone, I did mention to Sarah that we'll do the, um, uh, the presentation of the senior exit survey in May because Mike is, um, otherwise engaged as a spelling bee judge this evening. So, um, he couldn't be at the meeting and I didn't want to do the presentation without him. So.
So Sarah, please note that, that for the May meeting. Are there?
Oh.
We have a new, we have a new attendee, Sarah. You'll have to report another.
Probably can't figure out what's going on.
Uh, so Sarah, what else do we have for, um, action items for the May board meeting?
Uh, the, um, governance is going to do the, um, executive session memo and disclosure.
All right. Was there an action item around reviewing the, uh, our development resources? Basically going through the, going through the links that are from, that are pointed to by the Capital Campaign. I believe that came up during the Chair discussion.
Yeah, that was the idea of going through, you know, what's on the website where we can direct people to, um, to sort of put together that story to allow people to consider making larger donations.
Yeah. Ben, is that something that you or Maura could lead? Maura, I notice is not online at the moment. Or maybe she is.
I'm here.
Could, could you help lead, lead that? Walk us through the, uh, the thing, the, the items that we currently have?
On?
For the, the resources from the Capital Campaign or other things where we can do show and tell for the school for outside audiences?
Yeah, I think that, you know, kind of, I have the advantage of sitting on the Capital Campaign as well. Um, and I'm happy to kind of go through as we adjust them for where we're at now. Right? I think what we have now, like Ellen mentioned earlier, is obviously we need, we need some work in updating what we've got.
Yeah. Reality keeps hitting in the way.
Pesky little thing.
Pesky thing. Yeah. But I think, I think that would be great. I think that would really help, uh, educate us and, and, and members of the audience that are, are seeing it.
Glad to.
Thank you. Uh, anything else for, uh, non-standard action items for May? All right. We've done, so we've done the summary of the action items. Meeting effectiveness, how did our meeting go?
We're currently 41 minutes ahead of schedule.
We're currently 41 minutes ahead of schedule.
And it's good. And we had a robust discussion regarding the building and development. Other feedback on the meeting? Things we should keep doing or not doing? So we're into the closing items. At this point, we are going to adjourn, looking for a vote to adjourn to executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-represented personnel, the executive director. We, because doing so in public would be detrimental to our negotiating position. And we will not, we will not be reconvening in the public session afterwards.
Roger, did you create a link for that?
Yes, board members have, board members have a link. There, we are not inviting any non-board members to the meeting. And Zach, you are excluded due to a conflict of interest.
Makes sense.
So I'll, I'll take your motion.
So moved to Maura.
My second.
Second, second from Ben. And we'll, we'll meet, we'll start the executive session at 8:00 PM. So give your, give everybody a chance to stretch their legs. So Sarah, please call the roll.
Bella Gorman? Yes. Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Dawn Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristin Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul? Liz?
I do not see her on the screen.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Samini Sempath?
Yes.
And that's it. Zachary, you abstain, I guess, from that, right?
Oh, you can still vote.
Oh.
I'll still, I'll still vote to adjourn.
Okay.
Maura's saying yes, too.
Okay.
All right.
And we got Liz, okay. Motion?
Motion, motion approved. Board members, I will see you at 8:00 PM in executive session. Thank you, everybody.